Item number eight, we do have a public hearing this evening. Mark, can we do both of these at the same time?
Oh, well, yes, Mr. Mayor. So if you would like, you can open both public hearings on the water and wastewater rates first, and then on the garbage rates second. And when it comes time for members of the public to speak, you should feel free to come up at the microphone and speak about either of those topics, both of those topics, neither of those topics, but feel free to express your opinion on either the water, wastewater rates, or the garbage rates when it comes time for the public hearing. And we'll hold the hearing all at once, and then when it goes back to the city council, you'll take separate actions on each of the ordinances.
Okay, great, thank you. So we are going to hold a public hearing this evening. First, to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading and introduce ordinances enacting water and wastewater rates as presented, and the notice of proposed increases mailed to all property owners and residents. And second, to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading and introduce ordinance enacting a 2.32 percent rate increase for Recology San Bruno Garbage and Recycling Services to be effective July 1st, 2017, as outlined in the notice of proposed garbage and recycling rate increase mailed to all property owners and residents. Stat.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as the staff joins us up here at the speaker's table, I wanted to just outline how our presentation has been planned. So we will do our staff presentation regarding the water and wastewater rates, to be followed by staff presentation on the garbage service rates. We have, as part of the water and wastewater rate presentation, a couple of different parts to be presented by different speakers. They've all joined us up at the table here now, led by our finance director, Jim O'Leary, and assisted by our contract report analyst, Alex Handler of Bartle Wells Associates, and our public services director, Jimmy Tan. Following the staff's report, we recognize that there may be a few comments and questions by city council members in order to streamline and make our conversation this evening as efficient as possible. In recognition of there are several people here who may be interested in speaking at the public hearing, we would ask for the opportunity to hear the, all of the city council member questions, and then to respond to them in a, in, in, at one time. In other words, we'll record the questions and then respond to them all after we've heard from you. Similarly, we will do that with the public hearing, to the extent that there may be items that need a response or an answer that are raised during the public hearing by residents, we would ask, we have the opportunity to hear, record those questions, and then respond to them after all of the speakers have finished their comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on March 14th, the city council directed staff to distribute the required notices to the community regarding proposed rate increases for both water and wastewater rates. In addition to describing the details of the proposed adjustments, the notices outline the need, the needs for the increases, and set the protest process and the public hearing for this evening. In 2016, 2016-17 is the final year that has in place approved adjusted water and wastewater rates for city customers. The water and wastewater funds operate without tax support, totally funded by ratepayers. At city council direction, these funds have been set up as enterprise accounts, enterprise funds, meaning that each is a business operation with all revenues and expenditures recorded in the individual funds. In the trust agreements required in the 2013 wastewater refunding bonds, the city agreed that they would adopt charges for services that would exceed projected expenditures each year. This is a covenant that, that the city council or in the city agreed to in, in that refinancing. The current rate study contemplates issuing debt for the wastewater fund, for the water fund over the next five years, and the same rate, rate covenant would be standard and necessary if that debt were issued over the next five years. Multi-year rate adjustments were last approved by the city council in 2009, close to a 10% increase in each fund in each year. The analysis in 2009 actually covered 10 years and, and projected the requirement of 10% annual increases all the way through 2001, 21, 22. At the direction of the utility subcommittee, to even out revenue requirements and to ensure the lowest rates possible for the customers, the rates presented tonight are with a 5% annual adjustment, and the recommendation of the committee presented on March 14th was that the, the 5% increases was a fair and reasonable approach. City council awarded a contract to Bartle Wells Associates in 2016 to develop a rate and sewer rate study for beginning of the 1718 year. Alex Handler with Bartle Wells is here, and I would like him to address for the council several points, the highlights, to highlight the goals and objectives of the study, how rates are developed, and the content of their analysis, the rate options considered by the utility subcommittee, and to highlight the comparative rate chart that was one of the elements of their report.
Thank you. Okay, so in the big picture, the overall goal of our study was to do what we had done similarly five years ago, develop a series of recommended rates that reflect the cost of service. There were kind of two elements to the study. One is developing long-term financial projections to look into the future, build in the future operating and capital needs of the water and sewer enterprises, use reasonable, slightly conservative estimates. We used a little bit of a low-growth scenario, for example, 25 new homes per year. We based our projections off the 2016-17 budget, escalated costs by 4% per year for financial planning purposes. We used the latest capital improvement programs that the city staff has been developed to address many of the city's infrastructure needs, and the big picture looked to phase in the rate increases over five years to provide a level of financial stewardship and fund the costs of operating and capital needs. The second element of the rate study was looking in a little more detail at the city's water and sewer rate structures. You have rate structures that are, been in place since five years ago. There's been various things that have changed in the system. We wanted to make sure that they were still well reflective of the cost of service, so we developed new rates from, from the ground up, and your rates were pretty much in line with cost of service, with just a few very minor modifications to keep rates aligned with, with costs. As you know, the city's facing a lot of financial challenges on the water and wastewater side. For water, there's a capital improvement program that's identified over 70 million of high priority needs, including replacing old water tanks. You've got a lot of old aging pipelines, just like every other agency on the peninsula that need addressing. Wholesale water rates, which is only a portion of your water supply from, you buy water from the San Francisco Public Utility Commission, the wholesale rates have more than doubled since 2010, and the SFPUC came out with new projections within the last couple of months that foresee another 27% increase over the next five years. And like everything else out there, water and sewer are dealing with ongoing cost inflation, whether it's electricity, staffing, health insurance, chemicals on the wastewater side, small rate increases, even if nothing else was being addressed, would be needed just to stay afloat and shred water. On the sewer side, in addition to having old pipelines that need repair and replacement, you've got about $25 million that have been identified to address a legal consent decree from San Francisco Baykeeper, replacing pump stations and inadequate sewer lines to prevent sanitary sewer overflows. Again, this is something many of the agencies on the peninsula are currently dealing with. And you're doing all this in an environment where your citizens have responded admirably to drought by cutting water sales by 20%, which has affected the revenues of both water and sewer enterprises. So we put all this in what we think are very reasonable, conservative financial projections, worked with staff, ran these numbers by the city council subcommittee, and we developed a few different rate scenarios. One was the 5% rate increases for the next five years that's being proposed in the Prop. 218 notice, but we also looked at a little more aggressive rate scenarios to generate more funding for the city's capital needs. One was an 8%, 7%, 6%, 5-5 scenario, and the other one was a straight-line 6%. So we looked at a little bit higher rate increases in light of the city's capital needs as a way to get a little more funding generated to start addressing those a little bit more aggressively. And so what came out of that was the whole, the 5% rate increases approved in the Prop. 218 notices. Everyone always wants to know how do our rates compare to all the other agencies out there, so we have done some surveys of regional water and sewer rates, and yours are in the upper-middle range, same as where they've been in recent years. And you're not alone with needing rate increases. Virtually every agency in the area needs rate increases, whether it's the wholesale water rates or, or capital needs for pipeline replacements. So we, I pulled together a little list of what some other agencies are doing. Now, some agencies are already in the middle of multi-year rate increases, they've already adopted these. Other agencies are going through the Prop. 218 process, same as you right now. Just to highlight some of them, of your neighbors, Hillsborough has an 8% water rate increase adopted, and a 20, I think it was about 10, 10% sewer rate increase. Burlingame had a 7.5% water rate increase, they recently adopted. North Coast County Water District, 20% water rate increase. Mid Peninsula Water District, it serves Belmont, has adopted a 6% water rate increase. Redwood City, 7.8% water rate increase. I'm not going to read them all, just a few on the sewer side, because that's where there's a lot of more challenges with agencies with infrastructure. San Mateo is considering a 36% sewer rate increase, that's been in the news quite a bit lately. They've got to rebuild their treatment plant and address a lot of collection system upgrades. Foster Cities going forward with a 14% rate increase, 14.25%. Last night, Pacifica just adopted an 8% sewer rate increase. South San Francisco's looking at a 15% sewer rate increase. So you're not alone in needing rate increases, and again, the goal of this was to kind of slowly, gradually keep rates moving in the right direction to address the operating and capital funding needs. And I will leave it at that and turn it back over to Jim.
Again, on March 14th, the city council, or the utility subcommittee did recommend going forward with the 218 notice with the 5% increase, and Alex did mention the several options that were looked at and presented to the council at that meeting, but the subcommittee recommended that the 5% would be the most cost beneficial alternative for residents that allows coverage of all necessary costs. Alex also mentioned and gave again some specifics as far as cost areas that need to be covered, and I, I just wanted to just summarize, and this is verbal rather than a PowerPoint, but the cash flow for sewer for 1718 shows, shows a total projected expenditure of $20 million. $20 million is the projected expenditure, and that is what the revenue is designed to meet. The, the revenue increase is required to generate that 7 million, that $20 million in expenditures. So the increase amounts to about $800,000 in sewer, but I, but I want to just briefly describe what the expenditure categories are to make up this $20 million. Operation and maintenance, which includes personnel costs, is about $9 million. Debt service is about $2 million, and capital is another $9 million. The rounding is $20 million. So those are the three components, but I just wanted to point out that of, of operation and maintenance of the $9 million, almost three and a half million dollars goes to South San Francisco for the operation of their treatment plant. The city has an obligation, based on agreements with South San Francisco, to reimburse them for those costs. The debt service is in fact debt service of the city's own bonds and debt that South San Francisco has obligated itself, that based on agreements, the city has, the city of San Bruno has an obligation to reimburse South San Francisco for a portion of their debt service. And then the, about $9 million for capital that is included, about $2 million of that capital is in fact capital for South San Francisco, that again, based on agreements, the city is required to reimburse South San Francisco for capital projects that they undertake as it relates to either the Shaw Road pump station and/or their treatment plant. So again, a large portion of these dollars are actually committed requirements that, based on various agreements, the city has an obligation to, to pay. And the same general format is true on the water side. The, we have obligation based on our need to pay South, or to pay for water purchases through the SFPUC. So there are a, a significant portion of the costs in both the water and wastewater are predicated on either prior council actions or agreements the city has with South San Francisco's and others to, to pay these costs. At, at this time, I think, again, capital is the single largest portion of the anticipated expenditures, and Jimmy Tan is going to describe a little further capital expenditures related to the proposal.
Good evening, again. As the finance director mentioned, you know, since the water and wastewater improvement programs are funded through an enterprise fund paid for by the rates, water and sewer rates, and I'd like to take a moment to provide an overview of the projects that we have in our program to be completed in the next five years. So the city's currently using the, the water and sewer master plan. The water master plan was completed in 2012, and sewer master plan was completed in 2014 as guidelines to prioritize and complete the improvement projects. And the water master plan provided improvement recommendations of the water distribution system based on capacity, seismic reliability, and replacement needs totaling $240 million. It's important that these water improvements recommendations are implemented to provide a reliable portable water conveyance system without interruption from water main breaks and to have adequate water pressure for fire flow, fire and during emergency. And the sewer master plan also included recommendation for prioritize and schedule improvements for pipelines and pump stations, and the total estimated cost for the recommended sewer improvements is $134 million. And the city's currently, has an aggressive sewer replacement program to replace pipelines to increase the capacity, and to rehab pump stations to meet the requirements of the consent decree, and also to reduce the sanitary sewer overflows. So what has our city done in the last five years? So this table shows various water and sewer replacement projects from 2012 to 2017. With the CIP budget totaling about $23 million, the city, you know, completed approximately $60 million worth of water projects, consisting of mainline replacement, pump stations, and tank. Water meters were also converted to advanced water meters, which provided many benefits to the residents. And for wastewater system, the city completed about $5 million worth of improvements. As you can see, there's a, a net savings of about $2 million as these projects were completed less than the actual budgeted amount, and these were, you know, the remaining funds were, were transferred back to the enterprise fund for future water and wastewater projects.
Excuse me, if you can hear anything, can you say?
Okay, let me say it.
A little, a little closer.
Sure, sorry about that. Since improvements to the city's infrastructure is dependent on the rates, it's crucial that the rates be maintained or increased to provide adequate financial support for replacement of the aging infrastructure. What projects are currently in progress? This slide shows many of the water and wastewater projects that will be completed within the next five years. Majority of the sewer projects, which are shown in green boxes, have, has been brought to council for award of design services contract in order to meet the consent decree deadline. The city's also focused on replacing many of the aging pipeline, for both water and sewer that are located in the neighborhoods east of El Camino, shown in areas one and three, as they are much older than the rest of the city. In addition to replacing the water pipelines, you know, the city is also replacing water tanks. Many of the water tanks are reaching their useful life, and the city relies on these water tanks to provide water supply daily to the residents, and then these tanks also provide storage for fire flows. And since, you know, we live near the sanitary fault, which is located, you know, just right by, you know, along Highway 35, it's crucial that these water tanks are upgraded to meet the new seismic requirements, and, and these tanks were designed back in the 60s and 70s and, you know, through those standards. So right now, you know, the seismic standard has changed, and, and failure of these tanks, as you can, you know, imagine, you know, during a seismic event will cause major damage and flooding issues. So as you can see here, you know, as I mentioned, there's a lot of water and wastewater projects underway. Here's just a list of the water projects that will be completed in the next five years, totaling about, you know, $42 million. And the highlighted projects in red has, have already commenced, and staff will be bringing to council for design services of other projects once funding are available. And these are all the wastewater projects that's, you know, in the next five years. The total is about $48 million, and again, the ones in red have already commenced, and many are already underway, you know, there's construction for the spyglass pump station is, is starting already, and we completed two projects, one Trenton and one Genovin recently. So we're making great progress to meet the consent decree deadline, which is next year, July 2018, so. And that's all I have.
Actually, my feelings are a little bit hurt that no one cared that you couldn't hear what I was saying, but that's, just if I could clarify one, one point, and, and that is I, I made several references as it relates to South, to South San Francisco and the city reimbursing South San Francisco for various costs. The cost that arise is really at the jointly owned South San Francisco and San Bruno treatment station, so it is an obligation for a facility that the city of San Bruno partially owns, and so it's, it's not reimbursing somebody else for something outside of the norm. Again, it's, it's for a facility that the city of San Bruno is the joint owner of. I would just conclude. The introductory remarks at the, at the March 14th city council meeting, in the course of the council discussion, there were some points raised and questions asked that staff didn't have an opportunity to respond to, and included in the packet are several pages of our understanding of questions that the council relay, asked about prior city council actions, about funds, and funds that may have arisen as a result of prior city council action related to responsibility for laterals. There were another, other questions that, you know, in, in some detail, if the city council at any point, if there's anything unclear or you would like further discussion on those, staff would, would certainly appreciate that, that opportunity. So that is the conclusion of the staff report.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Connie?
So I think if it's the council's pleasure, we could either accept your questions now and then go to the garbage rates, or however you would like to handle that.
Do you want to go right into, into the garbage, or would you rather?
I think we should stay on this.
Okay, stay on this. So Marty, do you have any specific questions regarding the water, wastewater?
The questions, if you can comment on them, in questions after all public commentary.
Well, what I'd like you to do is ask your questions, staff will write them down, go to Rico, he has questions, maybe, and then staff will answer those questions that they can, all at the same time. So we're not doing it back and forth. Right.
So what I, what I'd like to follow up on is the discussion, or the question that I had last time about the pump stations and the costs associated with those, operating those, and the fact that those pump stations serve a limited number of residents. And, and often people are asking, well, why is our rate so high? And I believe I'm factual when I say that, well, in a newer city where there is a pump station installed, typically the residents that get serviced by that pump station would pay more for that pump station's operation and maintenance. And so the way San Bruno developed was that the pump stations that are in service, I think they average $2.5 to $4 million to replace, and I didn't get the cost information on how, how much it's, it costs to maintain with the electricity, with the staff, with the chemicals, whatever, or I'm sorry, with the maintenance on, on that. So I was, in, in explaining how expensive it is, it's, part of the reason is that it's our model, the way we, the way we pay things in, in San Bruno is that we all share that cost. And so it, it kind of goes in hand that it would be more expensive for, for us to all share that cost. I understand Olympic pump station was replaced from a little station to something brand-new recently, or in the last two, couple of years, and the option there was to have a sewer, to gravity sewer system in place there, and it wasn't. And anytime you can go to add in gravity, gravity's free compared to where you put in the pump station. So I, I, I guess I'm asking for staff's acknowledgement that when, when you don't maintain something like a pump station and it, that cost is shared by everybody. So even though that sewage isn't running through your house like it is at the, at the treatment plant where everybody's stuff winds up in one spot, and if you can comment on that, or I, I do have a, a response here from, in, in the packet, but most of the people don't have a packet here, so what if you could respond to that?
Any other questions, Marty?
Yes, the other question I have is that we received this, these answers to questions that some council members, and I was one of them, that gave to our city manager earlier this weekend, in my case, it was yesterday. In the modeling, it says that we're receiving, that one of the questions here for the groundwater storage recovery for, with the, the agreement with the SFPUC, it says that we're receiving 2.1 million gallons a day for free. 2.1 million gallons a day for free. So this is a question answer on page two, second question from the top. And so is that free water included in the modeling for the rate study? And how many more years do we get 2.1 million gallons of water a day for free? And how does that affect the cost modeling?
Connie? Anything else? Okay, Rico?
Maybe just two questions for now. One is a explanation, obviously, the city council, the majority chose to shift the responsibility of the private laterals to the homeowner, for those that were not already a part of that. And so obviously there was savings because it was going to increase what has been done because obviously that stopped. So I think even in the, some of the protests, the question came up, so what happened with that? What I mean by that is, is there a savings? If there was a savings or it didn't increase, then how is that accounted for? I do understand that there is obviously a water usage fee and there's a sewer, there's fees, but there's a, just even the service fee, I should say. So there's a water service fee, there's a sewer service fee. Even if you turn nothing on, that's why I'm asking for correction if I'm incorrect, could cost some folks ninety-five dollars. That's even if you don't use anything. That's just to have the privilege of having that service. So that, that's, I just want to be clarified that that is correct in my statement, that's all.
Those are two separate questions, correct? I mean, the, the...
You mean, did I make three questions right there?
Well, I, the, the, your second question had to do with the rate structure, if there's a flat rate and...
There's a, there is a service fee.
And, and the service charge, there's two components.
Right, there's a usage and there's a service.
Right. And then your, your first question had to do with the laterals.
You're correct.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else?
Not, not for right now.
Okay. Ken?
I want to be a little more general on these percentages and I'd like to hear from the subcommittee eventually on, on, and I know it, it was mentioned at the previous hearing on why you decided to go from a six percent to a, to a five percent. And I see in the, the staff report that a one percent, each one percent is about one hundred and thirty-two thousand to one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So on a bigger savings, you showed the last five years and you showed that there were about two million dollars in savings. So I'm curious as to a scenario of a lot less, say, maybe a three percent increase. What would that do? And quite possibly if we had similar types of savings on our, on our capital improvement projects, would that be enough? And so I guess it's going to the consultant as far as, you know, the modeling of the rates. We're, we're up here, we're not engineers, we're not public works people or anything. We have to trust a lot of, well, okay, you are somewhat. We have to trust what's in the reports, we have to trust the estimated costs of some of the, the most expensive projects the city incurs. So I want to get a better idea of how much fat is in here. I mean, how close are we as far as estimating? I mean, we're talking millions of dollars. And as much as there's a suggestion that we get certain neighborhoods to pay for, I mean, that would, to me, that would be, you know, a real deal breaker for those, for those neighborhoods because we're talking possibly a twenty percent increase in those neighborhoods that have a pump station or something. But I guess what I really want to get at is, what's the real, you know, what's the, the drop dead figure? What would be, what would be the percentage? And, you know, and, and I know we go through some of these discussions in other projects is you got the no build, you got the minimum build, you got the, what the departments and the staff would like to build, you know, and then you come into a, you know, you come to a compromise. Obviously, we can't, you know, staff and the rate, rate, the consultant propose something a lot higher. So we settled on five, five percent over five years. Was there a model for three percent? Was there a model for four percent? You know, and what types of projects would not be, I mean, I need to be sold that, you know, we just can't get things done for us, you know, for this minimum, for a minimum increase. Do you understand what I'm getting at? I think consultant is, is, is nodding. Okay. So I think I got it clear. Thank you.
Irene, anything?
No, thank you.
All right. I, I would just like to confirm, people have heard about the consent decree, maybe a quick explanation on what that is and what we have achieved since that was issued regarding sanitary sewer overflows. Because I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, we, at the very end of last year, we had one, otherwise we didn't have any. So, you know, what are the ramifications if we do not comply with that consent decree? I would like to know that, so. So for staff, I think Marty asked a question about pump stations.
So if, if we could start at the...
Sure.
Could we start in a different order?
Sure, as long as we answer them all, that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely. So there was a question about the, the scenarios that were proposed, whether there was a lower than five percent scenario. And there was a assertion that the consultant proposed a higher rate scenario. I'd like to ask Alex to respond to that, but I'll say right at the beginning that there were a couple of scenarios outlined in the original draft study that was prepared by Bartle Wells. It was subcommittee review through the utility subcommittee and a request by the committee to review a higher rate proposal that would allow acceleration of the capital program by putting more money into the program at the, at the early years of the five-year scenario. So that higher rate program was recommended for analysis or requested for analysis by the subcommittee and subsequently, it, it, so there were two higher than five. There was five straight across, six straight across, and as the, as Alex mentioned earlier, ten, I'm sorry, eight, seven, six, five, five, over five years. Ultimately, the subcommittee decided to recommend the five percent, but that was, that was discussion at the subcommittee as opposed to a recommendation by either the consultant or staff. So Alex, if you could respond to essentially the way you, you analyze rates in, in terms of whether cost savings from projects would, 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 how that would be effective and address the question about fat in the, in the budget or the rates.
Sure. A few things. One is, yes, we did evaluate other rate scenarios with lower rate increases. What would happen if there was, you know, less rate increases? And unfortunately, you just don't generate funding for your capital program because that's what gets cut first. You still have to fund your operations, you got to buy your wholesale water, you got to pay for collection system, you got to pay for wastewater treatment operations to South San Francisco, your share of that, you got to cover your debt service. So what gets typically slashed when agencies have to go with lower rate increases is the capital program. And unfortunately, even with five percent rate increases, this is not generating, you know, excess money for your capital projects, it's not generating enough. So even in our projections with five percent, we had to rely on use of, you know, small amount of debt service. As you're phasing your rates in each year, you're, you're not doing twenty-five percent rate increase off the bat, for example. But, you know, as you're phasing rates in, you're still not generating enough for your capital needs, whether it's the consent decree or pipeline replacements or water tanks. So you're going to have to do some financing even with the five percent. So that's not, there's not like, there's, it's not like there's fluff built in there. The prior rate study, when we looked back, you know, this is going back five years, we did look at a more aggressive rate scenario, but that was also trying to even more aggressively take on the capital project. So when we started this project, that's one of the things we were told in the beginning, hey, let's look at it afresh, let's try to balance the capital needs with the desire to keep rates as low as we can while still addressing those needs. So could you go lower? You're going to be losing money, not just the first year, you're going to be losing more money the second year, now you're four percent behind. The third year, now you're two, four, six percent behind. By the end of the five years, you're, you're generating, it would be, you know, one and a half to two million dollars less for water and sewer capital projects every year going forward. So I don't recommend going lower. If somehow things turn out better than planned and the, all of a sudden your capital projects are coming in at twenty-five percent of their bids, unfortunately, if folks know about the construction climate now, it's a real tough climate for doing projects. And a lot of projects are now coming in more like twenty-five percent higher from what I've been hearing from engineering firms that we work with. It's a tough bidding climate out there, there's a lot of work going on, there's not a lot of slack in the construction industry right now and going forward. A lot of huge projects. Apple's doing a five billion dollar campus upgrade, Google. So many agencies are having to do pipeline repairs and replacements and rebuild treatment plants that are, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years old now. But to get back to it, yeah, five percent seem to be on the low side, you know, in our projections, yeah, we don't, we don't put rosy scenario in our projections, we don't assume that, A, water use is going to rebound to pre-drought levels, that, you know, the growth is going to be through the roof. You know, we've seen agencies do that and these things don't pan out and they end up having to do emergency rate increases and end up even further behind when they started. But we did try to err a little on the conservative side, but to be very reasonable. We're using SFPUC's own wholesale rate projections. I talked to folks in South San Francisco about what we can project from them coming down the line. So I think the numbers we've put in here are, have a very good basis for them, there's not fluff built into them. And even with five percent, you still have to rely on some debt. So I personally wouldn't recommend going lower and knowing what the construction climate is and seeing, you know, the list of what you're trying to address, whether it's for the consent decree or just keeping up with your own needs of an aging system that's, you know, pipelines fifty, seventy, I've heard even over a hundred years old. You know, that's what came out of this process was, was five percent is kind of a, I think on the low end, what is prudent for moving forward with financial stewardship to, to accomplish what you need to take on.
I, I just want to mention, that's, that's close to what I, what I was expecting. I don't want, I don't want the race to go up and then have nothing to show for it. And then I guess there is, there is a percentage increase, just, you know, forget about capital, but there is a percentage increase that we have to have, you know, judging from, you know, what we have to do at the, at the waste treatment plant and obviously the, you know, the escalating costs of PUC water. Thank you.
Okay.
Could I just ask in, in maybe completing the response to the question, I might have been a little inarticulate in, in what you quoted as far as the staff report saying, but just sitting here now, just order of magnitude, the, a one percent, a one percent increase in the wastewater rate equates to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And a, a one percent rate increase in the water fund is a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I might have split the difference in the staff report, but I think that is a more accurate depiction of going up one percent, going down with one percent, that's the, that's the revenue change.
Okay.
So just to summarize, there are a couple of questions associated with if we make changes, for example, to the sewer laterals and related to the SF, the agreement with the SFPUC, how does that affect rates? Rates, the analysis is built on the costs as they're currently anticipated and budgeted. And that's, so for the sewer laterals, these, the city's costs for the service that it's providing were used as the basis for the rate analysis. I think that's a fair statement. That, the, there was a question regarding the SFPUC agreement and the 2.1 million gallons per day. This is a little bit more complicated, but we are engaged with the city of Daly City, Cal Water and the San Francisco PUC in a joint agreement to protect groundwater by providing an opportunity for the groundwater system to recharge itself by cutting back on pumping in certain years and allowing pumping in other years. It's a collective manner of managing the groundwater supply that all of these agencies draw from and rely upon and that needs our joint effort in order to adequately protect it. The current agreement calls for the San Francisco PUC in those years when the water supply is sufficient to fund, to, to supply those agencies that are participants in the agreement with surface water. At, at an adequate level, the SFPUC is obligated to provide that surface water at no cost in exchange for the participating pumpers, we being one of them, to shut off our wells and not draw groundwater. Now, shutting off the wells is kind of a, it's kind of a relative statement in that the wells just don't go down and we lay off our people and there's no cost associated with participation in the agreement. In fact, the wells have to be exercised on a regular basis to keep them functional. There is continuing cost associated with the, whether the, whether the pumps are, whether the wells are actually producing water or whether they are participating in the agreement in a put cycle. So the agreement itself recognizes that the city will have cost whether or not it is using its wells to extract water. And in order to assure that the city remains whole, its rate pairs remain whole and it doesn't incur additional cost by having to purchase more water when the wells are shut down in order to recharge the basin, then that, that water is provided at no cost. But again, these issues are among the many that were factored into the analysis that built the rates around the revenue requirements based on the many different factors that go into the operating and maintenance costs and capital costs associated with managing the enterprise facilities. Please.
I heard the question as far as the lateral savings with additional component. I, I guess I just wanted to make sure, I think what, what the city man, or I know what the city manager said is correct. But I think the question had to do with the application of savings that may have arisen from the city ending its portion of, of the responsibility. And, I mean, I went back to the various staff reports and years of discussion on this particular matter. And what I could find it was clear that any savings that would accrue from that action was going to be diverted to repairing main lines. And so that, that money is in fact budgeted and being spent for the repair of main lines. So there is no net savings to the water fund by that action. Again, there was a, a concern that that would be an increasing cost to the city when we needed to do the, the main line repairs for consent decree and other reasons. So that, that, that money that was spent on the sewer laterals is now being spent on ma, on the main line and that is an expenditure component that's in the rate study.
So just to follow with a couple of questions related to the consent decree and the cease and desist order compliance requirements, the, and then the associated question regarding pump stations. The city is under legal agreements that require us to proceed in a certain timeframe, on a certain schedule, with certain capital improvements in order to avoid sanitary sewer overflows in the wastewater enterprise. The city has paid a fine, the city has agreed to the schedule and the requirements... The city has agreed to the schedule and the requirements, and the city would be subjected to significant additional fines and penalties and legal action, potentially both by the Regional Water Quality Control Board as well as the independent environmental groups that originally sued the city, should it fail to complete the program as scheduled. So there's a significant cost associated with completing the pump station rehabilitations and replacements, a variety of other projects that are included in those orders, but failure to do so will cost us even more and potentially substantially more. Related to the costs of operating the pump stations themselves and whether those should or could be tasked to the, the precise locales where the sewage needs to be pumped into the system in order to gravity flow to the Shaw Road Pump Station from whence it is pumped into the treatment plant in South San Francisco, the, I think the short answer is, we did not run rates in a manner that would exclude those costs because it is a cost of, of the system, the way that the system has historically been configured, operated, and maintained. And we have, and that is consistent with the way that most cities of our age and system operation handle the various features that together make up the components of the entire system and the operation of the system as a whole. In particular, the council member asked about the Olympic Pump Station, and I would just remind the city council that before that pump station was designed and scheduled for replacement and rehabilitation, the city spent a extended period of time evaluating the opportunity to abandon the pump station and to create a system whereby the effluent could flow on a gravity basis to the treatment plant or to the Shaw Road Pump Station. Council members may recall that after, and again, an extensive period of evaluation, that it was determined that the necessary agreements with other agencies into whom, whose systems that effluent would need to travel actually created a higher cost on an, on an ongoing basis. In other words, the long-term cost of doing the project a different way so that gravity flow could be utilized was actually, in the long-term, more expensive than replacing the treatment, I'm sorry, the pump station itself and continuing the regular operation of the pump station as a means of transporting, conveying the effluent from that particular area of the city. So again, the short answer is that we did not run rates. Presumably, the revenue requirement of the wastewater enterprise would be lower if the pump station rehabilitation was removed and tasked to individual neighborhoods that are served by those facilities. The rates were not run in that manner and we couldn't provide any credible estimate to the city council of what the revenue requirement and the accompanying rates might be if we did that. Just a reminder that the city council has directed the advertisement, the noticing of a flat annual 5% rate program over the next five years. Should the city council wish to address that issue in a more substantive manner, additional rate and cost analysis could be done at any time during the five years. Change of policy, a change of ordinances and legal requirements could hypothetically be done, and the rates could be changed to a lower amount at any time during those five years. The Prop 218 process precludes you from raising rates above the scheduled amounts without, at any time, without an additional notification and protest process. So we, we could certainly do that if the city council has an interest and were to so direct us. Unless there are other response comments.
I think Reco had a question on service charges. Rico?
Yes, it was just a Mattwell. Jim, you articulated it to me, so do you need me to restate or?
Well, I, I just wanted to, if, if your question is looking at water, for instance, the water rate is, is based on two components. One is the monthly service charge and one is the quantity charge. So, I mean, what you said is correct if, I mean, the quantity charge is based on tiers of usage, but everybody pays a monthly service charge if they use any water or not. So if, if that was your question, I'm confirming that that's correct.
If I could just add something into that. Yeah, the, the rates have the two components, the fixed and the, the variable usage-based component of the charge, which is, which is common for many agencies out there. San Bruno, like every other agency out there, a very large percentage of costs are incurred. Whether or not anyone uses a drop of water, you've still got to build and maintain the sewer collection system, the treatment plant, the costs are mostly fixed. Your water system, sure, you have to, you buy some water from SFPUC that's variable, but all the staffing, the facility maintenance, a lot of that is just maintaining that you've got the capacity there to, to serve someone when they turn on the water, when they flush that toilet, whether they've used much in the prior month or not. So there is a component of the charges that are fixed. I'll point out, your charges actually have a low fixed component compared to a lot of other agencies. We work with a lot of agencies on the peninsula, and I think about, somewhere in the range of approaching half of them have sewer charges that are 100% fixed. So you've got to pay the full sewer charge every month, whether you put in one drop or not. Here, you have a system where it's a, you know, partial variable, partial fixed, partial variable, so customers here have a lot more control over their bill than they do in a lot of other agencies out there.
Does that answer your question, Rico? Okay, yeah. Marty?
Just a follow-up question to that, so I understand the billing practices. So somebody has their service, they decide they're moving, they turn off their service. So, you know, three months go by. Does the property owner pay for that continued capacity charge during the three months? Because they really should be, from what you're explaining to me, that it's a fixed cost. We still have people driving around in trucks. So that is something I think if we're not doing, it seems that we should be capturing that rate, and you're nodding your head, so it seems like maybe you're agreeing with me?
Well, I generally agree with that. That's a policy decision for, you know, council to make. Certainly, there's a lot of agencies that allow folks, when they, someone moves and they, they shut off the system, that they don't have to pay the charge anymore, but then they may have a reconnection charge. But what the law is out there, there was a Supreme Court case that validated that, yes, if you have a fixed minimum charge, that it's quite legitimate to keep charging that even if someone moves out of their home, because you still have to maintain capacity in the system to serve the next homeowner.
Any other questions for staff this time? Okay, let's talk about the garbage situation. No, we're going to do it all at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Recology San Bruno has requested an interim rate year adjustment in accordance with the city's franchise agreement. The franchise agreement has been in place since 1998, and the basic rate structure for this franchise agreement calls for, allows for rate adjustments every year based on either a detailed year adjustment or an interim year adjustment. The overall design of the franchise agreement, which is comparable to all of the franchise agreements that I am aware of for garbage, is in essence that the company is entitled, in the terms of the franchise agreement, for reimbursement of their costs, to, to have revenue and to get paid for the equivalent of the cost of providing the service. That is how the franchise agreement is set up. And confirming that allowable costs are covered by the rates is really confirmed and analyzed in a detailed rate year. And that's what occurred last year. When the city council approved the detailed rate a year ago, the rate, rate adjustment a year ago, it was based on confirmation of recovery of allowable costs. In an interim year, there is very simply a provision allowing for an increase based on 80% of the change in CPI and any allowable pass-through costs. In this particular interim year, we have included the calculation and their, their application includes coverage, this 80% of the CPI, and also the increase in their disposal costs that are passed through at the landfill. And so those two are allowed under the franchise agreement. And, you know, I'm, I'm 100% sympathetic to the notion and, you know, the, the questions in many of the protests are, well, the cost, we, we just increased, we just had a cost, a, a rate increase a year ago. But that's true. And the allowance for the company to recover their costs is the basis of the franchise agreement, and that is the basis on virtually all franchise agreements for, for garbage. I think the one area that the council and the public could be most interested and most concerned about is, is the company being as efficient and productive as they could be? Because your analysis a year ago confirmed their costs, so there's no question about their costs. But the lingering question can be, are they being as productive and efficient as they can? And I think I can answer that question and be comfortable with it to give you an example. In 2015, in 2000, late 2015, the company came to the city and said, we had an opportunity to transfer disposal from one landfill to another. And in doing that, there is no incentive, and in fact, if you really want to drill into the franchise agreement, there's a disincentive to the company to propose that to the city because in doing that, all of the savings benefit the rate payers. Switching landfill doesn't benefit the company. And like I said, the more their costs, the more their profit. So it, there's a disincentive for them to come forward and do that. Recology in 2015 came forward and said, we would like to switch, and the rate payers are saving today with this rate adjustment, they're saving about $120,000 from what they would have been paying if the company hadn't come forward with switching their landfill location. So I think the productivity and the efficiency is in fact a legitimate question, and, and that is at least one example. I think, I've given you the basis of the adjustment. The, the president of Recology is here and could either make a presentation or respond to any questions that the council has.
Any questions for staff at this time? Marty?
I have a question. The CEO would be ready.
Kirsten?
General Manager, I'm sorry.
Wow.
CEO, though, why not?
I'll take it.
Okay, so, I believe it was last year, I, I asked it, if we could do anything about the seniors where they're generating like a quarter of a bag. I read all of the, the letters here and what can they, what can we do to, to, can, can they share their neighbor's bin? If the neighbor says, hey, I'm going to sign and we're not going to overfill it, I'll let, I'll let the, the little old lady or the, or the, the little old man or whomever it may be to share that service because they really don't use it. And I, I think there's some other people out there that, they're, they're probably younger, but they're, they're, they're really good recyclers and constantly, I'm using half my can. You know, we, we eat a lot of fresh vegetables and we recycle all of, all of our cans and glass and the, the garbage part is, is really small. So I was wondering if, do we have any hope for them or do, has any progress been made in figuring out how we could eliminate the charge for someone that, someone that really doesn't use the service?
Jim, do you want me to take that or? Okay, so I did receive all the letters as well, and I did review each and every one of them. And we did several years ago institute the 20-gallon option primarily for the single family home, the single person home, such as a senior possibly. And a lot of our seniors haven't quite yet utilized our 20-gallon service, so I do encourage those that are still in the 32-gallon, that are producing a little bit, to definitely move forward with the 20-gallon subscription. I want to remind you that there is still a cost associated with picking up the recycling and the green waste as well. So the cost is just not for stopping and picking up just the garbage. The cost is, is, it's grouped together with the recycling and the yard waste as well. So the 20-gallon option was, was instituted for that purpose.
I would just add a couple of comments to that. The city's policy and ordinance, as many if not most other similarly situated cities, does require every premise in the, in the city to subscribe to and pay for regular solid waste collection services. There are a variety of different reasons for that, but that ordinance and those requirements, if, if some other, so, let me just say, Recology is, is complying with the, both the intent and the letter of, of that requirement, as are we. And by providing programs that allow residents, not just seniors, to manage their own utilization of solid waste services, we've been pretty effective in, in at least providing options. The last thing I would mention is that seniors and others on low incomes receive the opportunity of a very healthy discount under our program here in San Bruno as well. And either the finance director, I can remember if that's 20 or 25%, but it's a significant reduction in the rate available for seniors and other low-income persons.
So if I can follow up with that. So it's an ordinance that council can change to allow, under specific circumstances, and we can figure that all out, but there is an option for that to follow through with. And even though the, even though the one person decided they didn't want the garbage, but they could also say they don't want the cuttings, they don't want the recycling, they could fit whatever. There's one letter from somebody that, that they basically eat out a lot and they generate like one little bag, maybe. I can guess they could just, you know, drop it right into my bin, I have plenty of room. And if there was, and if there was any problem with somebody trying to take advantage of that system overflowing, you already have something in place where you, you give them a notice and you charge them extra for an overflowing bag. notice and you charge them extra for an overflowing bag. And my last part of that, in the, in the staff report, it shows the thirty-two gallon toter, but the twenty gallon toter, how much is that a month?
It's, today it's twenty-two seventy-seven.
Twenty-two seventy-seven.
And the thirty-two is twenty-nine thirty-seven.
And that's going to increase too?
Yes.
The little toter?
Yes.
Even though it's not in the staff report? Does that mean that we have to add it?
It's in the ordinance.
Okay.
On page one thirty-six.
Okay. On page one thirty-two it isn't. So getting some information out to those that want a smaller toter is something recommended and looking forward to possibly having a discussion and changing the ordinance is something that I'd be interested in doing.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, on the last topic about changing the ordinance, it is true that the city council could change the ordinance that requires each premise to have garbage service. That is an ordinance that is, I would say, universal. And the reason why it's universal is because it would be, cities would find it impossible to enforce and monitor private agreements between neighbors to share municipal services. So for example, we generally don't allow people to share their sewer line, except in those few situations where there might be a shared lateral. We don't allow people to share their water lines, I'll take your water. We don't allow people to share their electricity by running an extension cord from one house to the other. And similarly, sharing garbage service among residents would be one of those things that would be, would present a very difficult enforcement problem. And that probably explains why no city that I'm aware of does that and why the refuse service is required for each resident.
Thank you, Mark. We do know that Marty has extra capacity if anybody wants to talk to him after. Any other questions regarding the recology rates?
Thank you.
Do you have some questions?
Yes.
Yes. We haven't, we haven't opened the public hearing. When we do, you'll get a chance.
I hope you will.
I have the same hope.
The question I have is that through our utility billing, obviously, in some jurisdictions, the garbage company does it on their own. In our jurisdiction, the garbage rate and the water and sewer are all placed on the same utility. My understanding is, if I'm correct, is that Recology also pays to help defray the cost because obviously we're billing for you. So as far as postage or as far as staff time, is that an accurate statement that there is cost recovery for that service, for us doing that?
One hundred percent guaranteed, yes.
Okay, so in essence, we are utilizing that as a resource and, shall we say, it's not an income, it actually just helps defray the cost, but by teaming up with that, it is a savings to the city? Because that bill would have had to gone out regardless if they did it on their own.
They make a significant contribution to the general fund to cover the cost of the billing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding Recology? Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak to us on either the wet water and wastewater rates or the garbage rates? Just stand up there and tell us your name and your street, please.
Good evening, members of the board, mayor, city council. I'd like to, number one, acknowledge that the police department got their award. It's a good thing to have. Actually, I thought it was, they were all here to deal with the people with the water. Yeah, exactly, exactly. My name is Mike. I've been a resident in San Bruno for forty-seven years. And I'm kind of listening to what your project is and how you're covering the costs and creating funds in order to do that. I'm standing here tonight because maybe you heard of the mystery spot in Santa Cruz. The mystery spot is my water bill, okay? Because I'm a single person in the house now, and I have for the last four years, and my water bill's five hundred bucks for that slew. And I actually was out of the house for six weeks, starting in the middle of July three years ago, came back right after Labor Day, and I had a water bill. So I went to the water department. And one of the other items tonight, I'd really like to know who the decision maker is and who you speak to to get an answer and get an effort to get things fixed. Because when I went to the water department, they explained to me that, well, you are paying from the time of the eighth to the eighth of the next month, and maybe that's the reason why you still have a water bill. Well, yeah, but there's no water usage, so how could I possibly have a water bill? Typically, when I go to the water department, the utility billing, that conversation always end up, sir, I think I gave you enough information, is there anything else I can help you with? Okay? They get frustrated because they don't have an answer, and I understand they're not decision makers, okay? I had watched the cable TV that you did before you put in the new meters here a couple of years back. And one of the things that I noticed is, is that they had actually, maybe said it by mistake, that the reason we have a billing that comes out every two months is it takes that long to walk to each house one time. So are you averaging what I'm using one month? And I might have the family over for a couple of weeks, and then all of a sudden it's back to normal, but you're taking the money for something that I'm not using? The other one is the sewer fee. It was explained to me that it's a direct correlation of basically how much water you use is how much that platform is established. Well, what happens if you're watering the lawn or if you're washing down the back patio, if you're washing, other than anything going down the sewer? Not as a complaint, but I will have to say, I always have water, I always have electricity, the garbage is picked up, it's clean, you do your job very well. But it gets back to this established water bill. I've asked my neighbors forty-seven years, what's your water bill? You've got four people. It's two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. What's your water bill? It's three-hundred-and-twenty-five. Mine's four-hundred-and-ninety-six, and I'm one person. So how could you flush a toilet four times more than me, but my water bill is higher?
Okay, we've got to wrap it up, Mike, but I would suggest you, you can actually get online and look up your own account and see where and when the water's being used because it sounds to me like you have leaks someplace.
I actually had, I talked to somebody within the city, and they sent up a gentleman by the name of Marty. He looked, he's found no water leaks whatsoever. Unfortunately, I have, I have two friends that work for the city, and they said, hey, you didn't hear it from me, but those water meters we put in were actually the wrong ones, okay? Your bill is not any more accurate than what it's supposed to be. If you know of who I can have come up and say, hey, yeah, you stand here and look at this and tell me why my water bill is so, so high.
Why don't you give the city clerk representative their name?
I'll do that. One other thing, too, I thought maybe when it gets to the garbage part of this, isn't the green and recycle part of that, isn't that, I've been told that that's free, we don't pay for that. I've heard that, here's your garbage bill, but if you put the thing out at night for the green, you don't get, you're not, you're not paying for that.
Okay, we'll get you an answer.
So, thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening. Jim Evangelos, one oh five De Soto Way. I'm concerned that the, believe it or not, the water, the sewer rates and water rates are not high enough. I think that we're, by keeping them down as low as possible, we're kicking the can down the road. We need to get, we're on a roll now thanks to baykeepers mandating vast improvements in the city where it's been needed. It wasn't done prior to baykeepers or the acceleration of the rate increases, so I think that we should just keep on track. Because if you compare the cost of, from the master plan of two thousand and, from the year two thousand to rebuild our sewer system and compare that to the master plan in two thousand and fourteen, the costs have almost doubled in order to achieve the same goals. So if we continue to rebuild as we're doing currently, I think that would be smarter than to hold back and sort of not produce as much as we could now because the costs will continue to go up, especially as the consultant said, the contractors are the ones with the power right now. And the bids are extremely high. So, thanks.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, I do have one speaker's card, and that's from Carolyn Livinggood. So Carolyn, I'm going to ask you to step in.
Looking around the room here, I think I'm one of the oldest people in here, so I'm going to give you a little bit of wisdom. If you don't already know, life can throw you a lot of curveballs. Twenty-one years ago, I had a union wage job. I thought I was set. I was a single parent, I felt pretty good, I had a retirement fund, I had sick leave, I had life insurance, I had everything. A hundred-and-seven-year-old company bellied up. And since that time, my income, even getting another job, recession hit, et cetera, my income kept spiraling down until it is now social security. And yet, the last two, three, now I hear next year we won't get an increase, last two years, we haven't gotten an increase. And yet, my PGE bill went up twenty-one dollars a month this year. I don't know why, but, and they're already sending notices that that's going to go up again. Medical went up nine dollars. Water, now you're talking about tonight, recology you're talking about. Tonight, I, before I left the house, I got notice the cable TV wants a rate increase. San Bruno Park School District sent a survey out, or called my house the other day. I had a teacher how to give a survey, but anyway, they want to get some money. I've heard rumors Skyline College may come along with something else again. And I ask you, if we're not, we seniors are not getting any increase, how long can we last? I fortunately own my home. I may not be able to eat, but at least I won't get rained on. But I think you've got to think about some of these things. I too have to maintain my house, like you have to maintain the city. I have to maintain my home. And I'm wondering how I'm going to be able to do that when I can hardly maintain myself. The city, yes, does give discounts, and I appreciate them. The city does a lot of wonderful things. I think I wrote it in my letter, I don't not acknowledge that. But I'm telling you, you've got to take some of us in here that are just surviving into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Just tell us your name and your street.
Mike Brainey, one forty-one Elm Avenue. So Mr. Chairman and members of the council, hopefully that you'll bear with me and let me get through this here before you interrupt me and stop me here, but I would like to move to amend or modify the process that the board and Recology or any other garbage service company obtains approval for proposed rate increases, including the current proposed rate increase before us today. The amendment to require that a pre-addressed postcard with instruction for required information and signature of the property owner slash customer of said garbage service to agree or not agree or protest the proposed rate increase to be included with the notice. I'm hoping for a second. Can anybody second that? Okay.
All in favor?
Are you calling for the vote?
No, I'm not calling for the vote. You're welcome to, you're welcome to speak your, speak your mind, but if there's a specific question, then we can have staff answer that.
Well, this is, I moved for a modification of the process to amend that. And I don't, no, I'm not real familiar with, I think it was Prop. two eighteen.
That's right.
That requires notifying customers. And, and the process in place is to have people send in protest, and you require a majority, which is fifty percent plus one, in order to consider or, or not approve such rate increases. I just think the process is not democratic when you don't have the possibility of getting the residents to approve or disapprove such increase. I mean, Recology a few years ago enacted a compost program. They gave everybody little buckets, raised our rates, promised to have compost at the park for us to use. I saw some lawn and garden service truck with Daily City on it coming and fill up one day, but I've seen it, that pile of compost, one pile, two metal bins, three times in, what's it been, over three years or something like that? So we got a rate increase for a program nobody wanted, nobody's using. And it just, to me, the whole process that you have in place of, you know, everybody has to band together to protest, you know, them requesting a rate increase, I just don't think it's a fair process. I think you need to...
Okay, well, Prop. two eighteen is a state law and...
No, I, I get that, yeah.
So we're trying to do that.
And this would, I believe that this would, would be following within that, those guidelines, that law. It's just the way you have it set up, when they notify us of the proposed rate increase and citizens are supposed to band together and agree or not agree, it's just not a fair process. How could, how can they ever be denied a rate increase, you know, in that manner where you've got to get everybody to band together and do, I mean, what are you supposed to do, walk the streets and have people sign protests?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you, Mike. We've got to wrap it up because I have a number of other speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, mayor, members of the council, Marco De Razo, Second Avenue. I just have two kind of, two comments, two different categories. One, and I might be preaching to the choir, and I know you already know this, but the rate increases are really distressing for a lot of folks in the community. I know we just heard from one of our senior citizen members of the community of how this may impact her ability to pay her other bills. It also ties into and kind of intersects with a theme that I've heard from many people in our community about how they can no longer afford to live in San Bruno and stay in San Bruno and raise their kids in San Bruno. So there's different segments of our community that are being affected in different ways. And I, for example, know a lot of my family that have to move out of San Bruno because they can't afford the living, and now we're asking, we're being asked to pay more for water and recology. So it's just a really distressing thing to hear. Secondly, and I guess I would direct this to the general manager of Recology, I would be interested to hear more about what the strategy is to communicate different options and price breaks and discounts that are available to members of the community. There was a great discussion about a thirty-two gallon size trash can, a twenty gallon size trash can, but then the comment was that many folks, many of our seniors and folks living alone hadn't taken advantage of that. So what is the plan to make sure that folks know that that option's available and it would be able to save folks a lot of money and help alleviate a little bit some of the rate increases? So I would be, you know, we can send a notice out letting folks know that we're going to be asking for more money. I wonder if there could be some kind of communication, letting folks know what the tax breaks are, what, not the tax breaks, but what's the benefit that's available that they're entitled to, to take advantage of. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get an answer for you. Thank you.
My name is Hank Chaff. I live on Basman Drive, and I've been in San Bruno for many years, probably forty years. And I remember a few years ago, maybe ten or fifteen years ago, a certain councilman begged to have more wells dug. And you know what the council... And you know what the council said? No. They all had their fears. And some of these people are in the council now. Well, we're paying for our mistakes. And actually, I'd like to know, how many gallons of water does San Bruno use a day, average? You don't know?
Well, we'll get that answer for you.
Okay. But anyways, the water department is pretty good. They do a good job, I have to admit. You know, you've got a problem, they come over your house right away, and, you know, you think you've got lakes. They work with you. I'm happy about that, but the water is going sky-high. Seven units? Is that too much? So, I want to know how many gallons San Bruno uses a day? And we get, what, two million gallons a day from the wells? I think we have four wells. How many wells do we have?
No, we're not getting any gallons from the wells. We're getting replacement water for not using the wells.
Okay. Very good. And also, concerning the trash, we have great garbage service in San Bruno, I have to admit. It's very, very good. You have a problem, call them up, and they work on it right away. But what I don't like about the recology is these big containers, when you're doing work at the house, you have to get a big container most times. And those containers cost from $100, $200, up to $500 or $600. But what's wrong, we can only get them from San Bruno. It's not open to different companies. Recology has it, and their paperwork, whatever, that San Bruno is the only one you can get a container from. That should be changed, you know, because they're going this sky-high today. Okay. And I want to thank you folks very much.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Douglas.
Pull that right, pull that microphone right down. There you go.
Hi, I live at Patola Heights, and I have a few questions. Last year, San Bruno adopted this sewer lateral, when every house, when they sell or buy, you have to do sewer lateral. And it's not cheap. It's around $8,000, $10,000, depends on the house and on the distance. So if you combine all these costs, which would be done before by the city, you get quite a bit of money. And when you talk increasing rates, this sounds funny, because all the owners have to do everything right now, which is, I think, a bad decision. And number two, everybody here, almost everybody, talked about recology. I would have a question. How many people in San Bruno do the recology? Which is waste food, or food waste, or whatever? How many people do it? We pay for something we don't do. We do recycling, we do garbage, but we don't do this recology. So why do we have to pay for it?
Talking about the composting of the...
We don't, you see, when you talk about recology for a restaurant or a cafe where they have lots of waste food, this is one thing. But we don't. We have very little. And this goes in the garbage. That's all. Because if you keep it for a week in a container with the greens, so-called green container, you will have flies, you will have ants, you will have all kinds of insects, which we don't have in the city. And diseases. So I think this is not a good decision, and I would like to know, why do I have to pay for something I don't do? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Madeline, and I live on Claremont Drive. I agree with this gentleman. The process to protest was ridiculous. Reading it off of the flyer that came into the mail was like, so you want 51% of the people, of every person, every person living here, to send in a protest letter for garbage and for the wastewater, or the water and wastewater? And that's ridiculous. Why don't you have it online so that everybody could just check what they have, put their APN number on there? You guys make the process so difficult for people to do that they're not going to want to do it, and I think you guys know that. Okay? The other thing, too, is I get the gist of all this saying, here are capital projects, we need to raise your rates to meet these capital projects. What happened to the rate increases for the last four years, five years? Were they paying for all these things where you're going to get fined? I'm like, where's the accountability on where the money is going to? You guys tell us year after year, oh, it's paying for capital projects, oh, it's paying for this, it's paying for that. But by the time that four, five-year stretch ends, oh, now we've got to pay more. And so basically, the gist I get of this meeting is that our rates are going to go up every year, no matter what. You could put out capital projects, whatever, but every year, a resident is going to have to pay more every year, no matter what. Whether it's recology, the, whatever franchise contract you did with them, they're going to get a raise every year, no matter what. And who pays for it? All the residents. How are residents supposed to stay in this city when every year, every rate goes up, no matter what? And any protest is just going to be ignored? That's just my...
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Raina Burgos from Flor Avenue 293. One question and kind of comments. A week ago, the pipe on Georgia and East San Anselmo burst. If the water pipe broke, I was walking Bowie in the morning, and I'm the one who placed the 911 call. So basically, I stood there until I saw someone showed up, a young man showed up trying to shut off the valves, and another gentleman, I can't recall his name, said that the system was 100 years old. My question is, and they were trying to map where to shut it off, because it was a river, it was a river. And I wanted to see why the system hasn't been changed, or whether it's scheduled to be changed, or what was it done to remedy? Because I don't think that nothing else was, I mean, it got shut down, but what was the result of that? That's a question. Second thing about the garbage, I do, we do in our house, most of the compost, and we love it. We love it, and I'm glad that we have that system. Thank you for having that. Also, recycling, the recycling. One thing that I do have, though, we have asked to have a smaller recycling container, and they said that San Bruno doesn't provide that. How much do we pay for the compost? Because garbage, we basically get one little bag, and we have the 20 pounds. Can we go smaller than that? It's just a question, but thank you for having the ecology. I really like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Sandra Perez Burgos, Mastic Avenue. I want to talk about some missed opportunities. We have some people who are being overcharged. They use very little garbage for a big container, yet I see many apartments building, many on Huntington Avenue, who are using the smallest container, and it overflows. So all that adds also litter to our streets. I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to report that, that they need to upgrade, because it's the same apartments every time. The birds come, they pick it out, because they're open, they flow into the streets. I think that's a huge missed opportunity. Thank you.
All right.
Stephen Seymour, Mastic Avenue. You know, listening to everyone here today, I just think that we really need to have a little more compassion for those folks that are on fixed incomes. And I think I heard that there might be some program. I'm not sure, if there is one, though, I think we need to do a better job of explaining what the program is for those on fixed incomes to get some kind of help for both their garbage and their water. But, you know, even in watching the room today in the council, I just ask, I plead with you all, to have compassion for those folks that live in the city that are on a fixed income and struggle. And you heard from a few people in the audience today, the kind of challenges that they're faced with. And I think we need to, if we haven't changed the rates, to reflect or to help those folks out, we should. Jim earlier said, when we were talking about recology rates, he said one of the only things that we can question, or could question, would be maybe the productivity or the efficiency rates. When we were talking about the water, we heard that we have $2 million a year in debt relief, $9 million a year in productivity, and $9 million in capital. That's what I heard anyways. I may be wrong, but there was $9 million in productivity. And I would ask the city to maybe ask that same question of themselves. Is there any efficiency rates in the water department or productivity improvements that you can make that would help decrease the $9 million in operating cost? I'm not sure, I don't know what the answer is to that, but it's something that I think the city needs to ask, because there's a lot of people in the city who are going to get rate increases. And those rate increases could possibly be offset by efficiency improvements. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council regarding these two items? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from speaking to us on these items again. Any action by the council?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to staff, we had some, well, a lot of complaints, but a few questions, actually.
Let me see.
So we had a number of comments. I'll summarize those very quickly. One comment that the rates are not high enough in order to assure the capital program. Several comments regarding the affordability of rates, particularly for seniors and persons on low incomes, and then need to be compassionate for the situation of those persons. Acknowledgement that there are, it's not just water and sewer and garbage rates that are going up, but that utility and other service providers that we all rely on are raising their rates as well. There were a couple of comments regarding the protest process and suggestions that that be changed to make it more convenient for persons who might oppose the rates to have an opportunity to submit that protest, either online or via a postcard that's included as part of the notification process. And then I think that summarizes at least the major gist of the comments. There was a question regarding the amount of water used citywide every day, and I believe that our public services director, who's disappeared, could answer that question. However, I believe that that is in the vicinity of 1.8, 1.9 million gallons per day. It is somewhat less than the 2.1 million gallons that is our supply assurance. It's the amount that we need to be able to produce to provide the maximum theoretical capacity of the city. But the amount that is actually utilized on a regular daily basis is in the 1.8 or so million gallon range per day, and we'll confirm that when the director resurfaces. There was a question regarding, I just repeat the response that I provided previously regarding sewer lateral replacements, sewer lateral repairs that have been tasked by City Council Action approximately a year ago to private property owners, and why are the rates increasing despite the fact that the costs of those repairs, or the cost of those repairs, when they are necessary, have been tasked to homeowners individually? And the short answer to that is that we evaluate the revenue requirements of the water and sewer enterprises based on actual costs. So any savings that we can achieve, any cost increases that we incur, all of that becomes part of the overall analysis and the bucket into which the total revenue requirement is calculated. So while there are potential for cost decreases in some areas, there are cost increases in other areas, and all of that is factored into the revenue requirement and the necessary rate increase in order to cover that rate requirement over the base level of revenues that are anticipated to be collected. I want to respond, I don't have the answer to the question regarding what was the result of the water, it sounds like it's water main line at Georgia and North San Anselmo. I don't know the specific result of that particular incident. What I can tell you is, and there was a comment about the fact that staff seemed to need to spend some time doing, researching the maps and trying to figure out what valve to turn off in order to actually shut down the flow of water. Interestingly, and somewhat disappointingly, that is not an unusual occurrence. Our system is very old. It is deteriorating. Main lines are prone to breaks and water leaks or water line ruptures in not only wastewater, but can be very tricky to investigate and to fix in some situations. Regarding the mapping in particular, again, the system is old. The maps that identify the locations and the configuration of the system is something that our staff has incrementally been able to input into our automated geographic information system very arduously over a fairly long period of time. But the maps that were left with us when the system was originally put in place, in many cases, are difficult to follow and/or nonexistent. So a lot of the information has been pieced together over a period of time, and we have a very aggressive program in place to get our systems adequately mapped and with information that is robust enough to reliably prevent those kinds of difficulties in the future. The, I don't know whether you can answer the question about how many people in San Bruno are participating and using the organics program? Do you have any answer for that right now?
No.
Okay. So we would have to look into that. And then lastly, just going back to the water main breaks, I forgot to mention one thing that when we were looking at information earlier today, the, I became aware that we have roughly between, at a very low level, 50 and as many as 150 or more water line breaks every year. And that is part of, but in the recent years, since about 2011... And that is part of, and in the recent years, since about 2011, we have seen a steady, not rapid, but relatively steady increase in the number of breaks that we're experiencing every year, which is part of the imperative to get our system rehabilitated in order that we can cut back on the responses and the need for emergency and other short turnaround repairs that are time-consuming and costly. That, I believe, covers all of the questions that I noted.
We had a question on debris boxes and how does that work? Why does recology?
Great. So, the franchise does require that residents and businesses in San Bruno use recology debris boxes. I will let Kirsten respond to the theory behind that. I believe it's a cost offsetting opportunity.
While she's going to the podium, I would just add, or I guess I would just like to comment that revenue generated through drop boxes provided by recology are part of the revenue picture that offsets expenditures to the ratepayers. That same drop box brought into the city by another company generates no revenue to the city and does not benefit the ratepayers.
That's it.
You agree? Marty?
There's a 10% franchise fee on the garbage? And on the debris box?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess I heard that a little different, that there was no charge? Where the city wasn't benefiting from having the debris box usage? But we are, we're getting 10% franchise fee on each debris box. Yes or no?
If it's a box provided by recology, the revenue for the box is included in the revenue calculation for the rate adjustment. That's revenue that's included. And the city gets a 10% franchise fee on that transaction.
I just wanted to confirm that.
If it's a box from outside of the city, from some company other than recology, there is no benefit.
Right. And that's actually prohibited unless it's from some type of recycling owner? What's the loophole for somebody to not get the debris box?
The loophole is if you are the owner of the construction company doing the construction work and you actually own the debris box, then that's when you can do that.
Or you can use your truck, your debris, you don't need a box, but you can use a truck.
You can.
To deposit that in your, okay.
Yes.
That's what I remember, thank you.
Yes.
Kirsten, the question came up about how does recology get the word out regarding all of these different sized cans and everything? I've seen the flyers, but maybe you could just explain.
So, we, twice annually, we have the annual brochure that we send out to all residents in San Bruno. And that goes out at the end of June. And it talks about the various services that recology provides. We work with city staff when we review that to see that it's encompassing everything that residents might need to see. And the one coming up, we're still drafting it, so we can definitely ensure that the choices, that the toter size choices are prominently displayed in that annual brochure, so that we can make sure the residents, at least if it's on the front, they'll see it, not on page two.
Okay. And one more question regarding the overuse of the bins on apartment complexes. We have an issue with apartments, or is that an ongoing thing with recology?
We do see overflow, we have overflow quite often. We do charge the customers. Our drivers are supposed to tag the customer with a non-collection tag and then report it back to the office. And then we do charge the resident or the person who is utilizing the toter for the overage.
Okay.
To continue the revenue.
And just Kirsten, if you could describe the various things that recology does in counseling or following up with customers where you observe that there is a need for either a larger debris box, or I'm sorry, a larger collection container or some other change in the service that would be beneficial, both to capturing the garbage as well as to the customer themselves?
Sure. We do have on staff a waste zero specialist that we utilize daily, who communicates with the driver. So, in essence, if an apartment complex is continually overflowing, essence creating more litter as well, she then reaches out to the property manager, schedules a meeting with them to ensure that all of their residents in the apartment building are recycling or subscribing to the compost program if necessary. We also have buddy bags that we distribute to multifamily residences to ensure that they can, they have a form or something, a mechanism to then recycle and bring it down to the recycling. So, we are always open to, if you see one happening, please let us know. We'll get Misty, her name is Misty, out there to educate the apartment buildings that that might be happening. Or commercial businesses, we do the same thing.
All right. Lastly, maybe to Mark, can you just explain the 218 process?
Yes, so Proposition 218 was adopted by all of the voters of California, and it's in state law. And so, the 218 process isn't something that city councils locally can change. Proposition 218 has been interpreted by lots of courts. And basically, what the courts and the legislature has said is that you can't protest, you cannot protest using email. And there's a specific procedure as to what, as to how you can protest. And that's what the city does, and that's what all cities do. We do understand and have heard over time that there's a frustration about the Proposition 218 process. And those frustrations really should be directed to the state legislature and not to local cities who don't have any power to alter those provisions. It's important for the city to comply with those provisions, because if they don't, then they can be sued for not complying. So, that's the reason why the city complies with the letter of the procedures.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair, if I could just piggyback on that. How old is 218? 20 years old or so? Yeah. And what was, yeah, and what was the process? And what were cities allowed to do prior to 218? I know the answer. We were able to raise the rates frequently without protest, right?
Proposition 218 is actually a wide-ranging. It has to do in large measure with taxes, which actually requires, not special tax, a regular tax increase can only be based on a vote of the public. But it also had to do and laid out requirements related to fees. And again, this is 1998. But as the city attorney indicated, the protest process for property-related fees are spelled out in 218, and that's what the, and I don't know if it's relevant, but I think most jurisdictions understand, and I think the courts may have ruled, that actually when you have a franchise fee and a franchise for garbage service, you are exempt from Prop 218. The city is not legally required to follow 218 for the garbage service. For years and years and years, this city council is directed that the same process be used both for water and wastewater and garbage, even though it's not legally required in our particular instance.
But again, it's prior to the 218 regarding fees and rates?
The city council was allowed to make these decisions, both on taxes and fees, without any voice at all of the public.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Marty?
I'd like to request if the toter could be placed for the small 20, the 20-gallon toter, that information and the reduced rate for the water? And is there one for garbage, reduced rate? If that could be prominently placed on the bill? We share the same bill, water, sewer, garbage. And in a really big print, you know, not the little tiny print at the very bottom of the page, but prominent, large, bold print explaining, hey, if you, what the details are for that project or for that rate reduction cost?
And I think this has been done, but I, please correct me, that sometimes when we have these protest letters, that those have indicated in regards to economics and particularly if mature or what have you, that have, has recology reached out? Or has somebody reached out to them just to touch bases to see if they're aware of that? That's a question. Please.
Yes. We are diligently working with the protest letters that we got. We've gotten about three different sets. And we are reaching out to those that have a 32 that we feel have said in the letter, they don't produce a lot of garbage, and we're offering them the 20-gallon. So, we do proactively respond to those.
Thank you.
Mark, could we take each one separately for this?
Yes, so you have three separate ordinances for water, for wastewater, and for garbage. And just for the record, there's a slight correction in one of the whereas clauses of the water and the wastewater ones. There was a typo in Section 1B. Both of the water and the wastewater ordinances talk about garbage and refuse collection. Of course, the water one should say water, and the wastewater one should say wastewater. But otherwise, there's no change in any of the ordinances. And if the ordinances are introduced this evening, we'll make sure that those corrections are made before they're adopted.
So, did you just say we had to do water, then wastewater, then garbage?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any discussion by the council or action by the council on these items?
It has one final, this was on regards to O'Leary and the recology that helps to pay for the utility billing. Is that money that we receive from them put back into the general fund? Or is that in the enterprise fund?
Revenue services, the expense for this is in the general fund. It's part of the finance department budget. So, it is general fund. And recouping that goes into the general fund. It's offsetting a general fund expense.
I mean, that's been the practice, I wonder, because in essence, it is, has to do with the utility, I mean, the enterprise funds as well. And if it's substantial, I don't know what it is.
The billing expenditure is out of the general fund.
Revenue services includes a variety of activities, including business license tax collection, a variety of other miscellaneous revenues. And it supports both the collection of the recology rates as well as water and wastewater. So, the revenue from recology as well as a representative cost share from both water and wastewater enterprises flows into the general fund to offset the proportionate shares of the total revenue services budget that is attributable to each of those portions of its operations. But there is a portion of the operation that is, that is, that supports a general fund activity.
So, yes in general and yes on enterprise? Is that what I'm hearing from you, or no, all in general?
The cost is all in the general fund. And revenues come in from the enterprise funds and from recology in their proportionate shares to fund that service that is shown in the general fund.
Irene, you had a comment?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. First of all, on page 1, wait a second, 125 in our packet where it has the questions and answers. And just to clarify, the second question says, from a historic perspective, are the utility rates? Oh, I'm sorry. First question, have previous city councils lowered water and wastewater rates in election years only increased rates the following year? That comment was made by me, and the answer here is no. But the comment I made was for elections previous to 1995. Because once I got on in 1995, Jim Ken and I got on in 1995, we did not do that practice. So, councils before 1995 did do that occasionally. They would lower rates before an election and then raise them after it. Prop 218, not that we did that ever, but other cities had, so that eliminated one of those things. And he's nodding that, yes, that was a common practice way back then when we're all in diapers. So, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. We had a lot of people talking about, why should I pay for it? I don't use it, or I only use it a little bit, or those kinds of things. And it's hard to pay water bills, it's hard to pay all our bills. And I understand that. We all pay the same water bills, we don't get a break on it, we get the same water bill, you guys do. And it's not, it's not fun to write that check. But you have to remember that the system, you getting water relies on a system that is whole. And if there's a water break on Fifth Avenue, it's going to affect your water, your water quality and break somewhere else. It's all connected. So, you can't not pay your portion. It's like schooling. Everybody in here, if you own property, you help pay for schooling. Some of you have kids in the school system, some of you don't. But you still pay for the schools, because that's how we do it. We all help share paying for that. We all benefit somehow or another, maybe not obviously, but somehow or another from having an educated, educated students. So, you know, if somebody asked us to be compassionate, trust me, we are trying to be as compassionate as possible. I've talked to many other council people, council people in the state and in San Mateo County. We are the only, as far as I know anyway, the only city that offers the 25% discount rate for people who can't afford it. So, that's a policy we've been following, I know at least for the 22 years we've been on the council. The other piece is, the compassion has to be balanced and weighed by the fact that if we don't do these repairs, somebody's going to suffer. You're going to, somebody down the block is going to have a sewer overflow, and it's going to flood their house. Or they're going to have a water break, and they're not going to be able to get water. Or there's going to be a water break, and it won't feed the fire hydrant, which we all rely on and hope we never have to use. So, those are just my comments. And keep in mind, too, when we originally started this 10, five years ago now, the original estimate was 10% for another 10, five years. So, we're actually cutting that in half. And I'd like to commend staff for being diligent and finding the efficiencies needed to lower that amount. So, thank you.
Okay, we have three items, water, wastewater, and garbage. Someone like to?
Didn't get a chance to comment on, we're doing water? What are we doing now? Which one are we doing?
We're doing water, then wastewater, then garbage.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and give my comments now.
Okay.
All right. So, I first want to thank staff for the time they put in. I also want to thank Irene for serving on the subcommittee on utilities. We do have compassion. That's why we chose the 5%. But we have to do something. I also want to acknowledge the residents, the residents who, 114 of them, who wrote the protest letters. And especially to you that are sticking around on a Tuesday night at 9:30. We've heard the question, we've got some answers of why our water rates, sewer rates are so high. And we have an old city. It wasn't maintained back in the day. Their money wasn't being reinvested into the, into the systems. San Bruno was ordered to spend more money for the, in the system, didn't do it, got sued, and now we're facing an aggressive upgrade to many of our systems. So, that's the past. Thinking of the past, about five years ago, I was in, on that side. And I'm not up here on the dais. And I was a public works inspector then. And when we were proposing a 10% rate increase, I protested. I realized that for some people in a recession, we were coming right out of recession. I realized that for some people in a recession, we were coming right out of, of a recession, that I thought that rate increases were too severe, too quick in, in the time. And I asked the council then to meet with staff, to, to talk about efficiency, about what we can do as, as, as workers to help out with making things better. I also asked the council at that time to change their billing cycle, or billing practices. And what had happened is, the, the council, or the way it's set up is, a renter or anybody, it was generally renters, who let a, an account build up, and then the city comes out and turns the water off, and then they would show up at the counter with cash to get the water back on, because you can't live in your house without the water, obviously. They'll get red tagged by, by the building official. So what happens is, what would happen is, these residents would bring some money to the counter and say, hey, can you turn the water back on? And it would get turned back on, of course, we're a city with a heart. And then perhaps the renter would kind of fall behind some more. So what would happen is, that money would, would, the renter's gone, and that, that money would be written off. And over the years, as I pointed out then, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years. It's been reduced a lot since then. I think it's down to 70,000, but 70,000 is a half a percent of a rate increase for, for water or sewer, your choice. So I think we should make the property owner responsible for paying the bills, and if it's, and then the renter, they could recover that from, for the renter, and they could recover that as part of a deposit. But it's something that we shouldn't allow to, to be unpaid. I wanted to clarify my comment about the pump stations. That was part of explaining why it's so expensive, that we're not recovering the costs for those pump stations by those that use it. I'm not saying that we should charge them the $4 million to rebuild the pump station, but it, it's part of the explanation of, of why things are so expensive here. Madeline, you brought up a very important fact. Water rates, sewer rates, electricity rates, they're going to go up every year. It's a part of life now. And because we have the old city, we have more things to fix. So it's a matter of being a little too late, too little, too late. You know, we didn't, we didn't invest in early, and so we're, we have to catch up. And we're trying to do that compassionately. This rate increase won't fix everything. You know, just like our streets, we don't have enough money to fix our streets. We don't even have enough money budgeted to fix our storm drains. And there are millions of dollars in, in unfunded repair costs that we know we need to do. And how are we going to do it? So now that we've established the limit legally of 5% by Prop. 218, now what can we do to lower that rate increase? Here's what I propose. The city has not increased the rate for new developers to come into our city to pay for connecting to our rate system. When I worked here, I think it was around $5,000 for a new customer to come in. We need to increase those rates in, at a, at a fair amount like we've been doing. All, all us rate payers are paying. B, or second point, the property, the property owner should pay water and sewer, like our consultant was nod, nodding over there, and I'm, Alex, I'm, I'm sorry for using you a little bit on that, but it's, it's, it's a common practice. We have to, as Irene said, we have to pay for this system. And if you're having somebody kind of not paying for six months, well, we still have to maintain that system. So those capacity charges or those fixed costs, costs should always be included. What other revenues are available? I recall during the San Bruno Community Foundation listening campaign, that a number of residents were asking for infrastructure, that 70 million from PG&E, why that, some of that money should be used to fix our streets, pay for our sewer system, water system, whatever. Some people can argue, well, that money is, is fixed, it's in an agreement. Well, any agreement can be changed, you've just got to get the other person to agree to change it. And somebody, somebody else could argue, well, it's not for salaries. Well, it doesn't have to be salaries. It could be pipe, it could be concrete, it could be a valve, it could be a regulator, it could be these fixed things. So if you were to take, and, and the numbers were 132,000 for 1%, so if we were to be able to get 100 and, 130, 150,000 a year from the PG&E settlement money, that would cover half of 1% for both water and sewer, right? San Bruno recently, if you, if you guys have been paying attention, received, or there's been a settlement, apparently, but not confirmed yet, with PG&E to give an additional 6 million. Okay? That 6 million has zero ties, no restrictions. So taking $150,000, put it for water per year, take $150,000, put it in sewer a year, that is going to cover another percent. So working down to reduce, and I, I think, Ken, you said three. If we can get down to three, you know, that's, that's part of the reason why I ran for council, is to control the rates, to do things differently. Now, what can, what can staff do? No, no. What can staff do? What, what, well, let's ask staff. We've had a, we've had a, I know, eight years since we had a meeting with staff to figure out, hey, all hands on deck, what can we do to improve things around here? They have the answers. The people that work have the solutions. Typically, the people that manage, you know, they're managing, they're not, they're not doing the work, so they can't see how it's going to get better. So those are the things I'm proposing, those are the things I want to see. Together, we can pay for the proposed rate increases, because we have to. We have to continue reinvesting in our system. Thank you.
All right. Rico, do you have anything?
I'd say this last time when we voted for the Prop. 218, that I was not convinced at that time. And, and first and foremost, I want to start off saying, because I've served with some of my colleagues for several years, one for a shorter time, and for my personal self, they do have compassion. They are compassionate people. People don't run for council and sit up, I don't believe and do it, for other than having compassion and care for the community. So that's, to be fair upfront with the people I serve with. But on the side of rates have to go up, and I said that years ago, and I still concur that they do. I'm one about efficiency and effectiveness, I brought that up at the last meeting. I don't know that I am, again, convinced, I'm not comfortable. I can tell you that I look at it, and yes, it's much better than the 10% for water and 10% for sewer. But also, I'm looking at it and saying, we want to commit to the 5 and 5 for five years, and yet we do a budget annually, and the most we did was biannually, we went back to annually. So how do we really project out for that length of time to really know efficiencies and effectivenesses? Because let's be honest, when the toll on a bridge goes up, it does not come down. If a rate increase comes up, likely will not come down, not saying it can't, because it does leave that latitude to do that. But I also know that if we were in a private business and saying to your customers for the next five years, I want you to stay with me, and we're going to increase it 10%, 10%, 10%, which we were already doing 20, 20, and 20, we might not have those customers. But in the city of San Bruno, we are the only game right now that offers the recology and offers the sewer and water, of course. And there's reasons for it, I get it. But it's about not being comfortable about what we're putting on in five years, a potential of a 50% or 5 and 5, which is 10, 10% for each year. So I am not comfortable with that. I would like to see avenues and opportunities for effectiveness and efficiency, and I would like to see us try to tackle it and get it down from the 5.
Okay. Anything, Ken?
Well, I'm not going to mince words. If I was sitting out there, I'd probably protest also. But I've been sitting up here for 20 years, and it was, it was 20 years ago that we, we spiked the rates. And it's because I had experienced monthly water main breaks on my street, probably along the lines of the river that was going down San Anselmo. And I got to talk to the, the maintenance workers, to the water, the guys, and it's always breaks in the middle of the night, never breaks during the day. And so got to know what they were doing, and they were the ones that said, we need a plan. We can't be putting Band-Aids on our systems. And, and I know we've been talking about 100-year-old, 60-year-old pipes, and I'm hoping that we will soon be able to say that we don't have any more 100-year-old pipes. But I committed, and the responsibility of representing this community and making these tough decisions is that we have to set aside our personal financial issues. I remember five years ago, I choked up because I saw that 10%. I had my bill in front of me with the 10% increase on it. I, I don't know how I'm going to do it. I mean, I don't make a lot of money, you know, every other month, and so, but I had to make that decision, because I had made it consistently. And we can't stop now. We just can't stop now. And that's why I asked that question, what is the bottom line? What is the amount that we can raise and still make a difference in improving the system, this 100-year-old system? And I'm satisfied that we're at 5%. And I'm satisfied with what projects we've been improving, what projects we've, you know, been accomplishing. Yeah, and they're, like I said, they're the most expensive projects in the city, year in and year out. And so maybe we can look at some efficiencies and, you know, consistently be maybe $2 million less every year on these, on these, you know, on these projects that get bid out. But then again, it's the most expensive place to live, and it's the most expensive place, place to build. So there is, you know, I'm, I appreciate your protest. There are 10,000 households in this commu, in, in this city, and 1% you know, protest. And so maybe, maybe there's people that don't, that, that don't want to protest, maybe there's people that feel that it's not worth protesting, but then maybe there's people that are thinking, we need to fix the city. You know, you need to make those hard decisions, city council, and, and make those decisions and fix the city, you know, for the future. And so that's why I'm going to consistently, again, thank staff for crunching the numbers, and also get the projects done, year in and year out.
Anything else, Irene?
No.
All right. Just a couple of quick comments. I, I've been on this council a long time, too. We bit the bullet many, many years ago, because other councils really hadn't done it. And now we're here from a 10% projected to 5%. And like, like Ken said, we pay the same bills you do, you know, all of these, including cable and everything else. So it, it's, it's a difficult thing to do, but if we can get it down to 5%, that's, that's a good thing. Projected at, at twice the price, it would have been tough. It's a matter of efficiencies. If you want it to, to drag on a little bit longer, then you can, you can cut the rates down. It's going to take you a lot longer to do, and have some more damage to this city. So, I mean, I'm, I'm for going aggressively, that's, that's my feeling. If 5% will do it, then I'll go along with the subcommittee. Regarding the use of one-time funds for ongoing expenses, no way would I ever agree to anything like that. Talking about foundation money, that's the, that's the very reason I said some people will run for this council to manage $70 million. And that's why the, we have an independent board from the San Bruno Community Foundation to watch that money. And they've, they've been doing an excellent job, to the letter of what in fact is our agreement with PG&E. I don't want to touch that, it should be going forward. They're doing infrastructure improvements. We just voted $50 million for a new pool and a new rec center. They're doing some new crossings down at San Mateo Avenue. Those are one-time things. But if you get into the ongoing slippery slope of using one-time funds for daily expenses, it'll never stop. So I understand your theory behind it, but no way would I ever agree to that, no way. So we've all had our say here, including the public, let's have some action here. Regarding water?
I'd just like to add that, I mean, our newest community, Foster City, I mean, it's, if it's any consolation, the rates are rising, too. And they're only 50 years old. So it's expensive. I'm going to, what do, what do, what do our?
We're asking for waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance regarding the water.
Make a motion to waive, waive the first, waive the first reading for the water.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to waive the first reading regarding the water rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So Carrie, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce the ordinance for water rates.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Mayor Ruane?
Yes. Next is the wastewater rates.
Make the motion to waive the first reading?
Oh, sorry. Second? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
There's a motion, a second to waive the first reading on the wastewater rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance for wastewater.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Mayor Ruane?
Yes. The last is the, is the recology, San Bruno garbage and recycling rates. Sure.
I'll introduce, waive the first reading?
I'm going to vote. Second.
Motion and a second to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Introduce the ordinance for recology.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. All right, thank you very much.